It's 5:30. We've called the meeting to order. Role call.
Commissioner Jennings?
Present.
Commissioner Rogers? Commissioner Spielman?
Here.
Commissioner Warren?
Here.
Mayor Gengler?
Here.
The opening prayer and pledge of allegiance, we have asked Larry Schwartz to lead us in prayer.
I pray that we come to you, thank you so much for beautiful day that you've given us. We thank you for the time that we can have together. We're thankful for the system of government you've given us, and we pray that you bless the mayor and commissioners as they sit this evening. We pray that you watch over them, their families, and bless them as they tend to our business daily. And pray that you be with our city workers, our first responders, and our citizens, so many who are facing challenges. We pray that you be with them in special time of needs, and I just pray that you help us as a community to grow together, to decide to move forward, and to do the things that will honor and glorify the Lord, especially tonight. We pray in Christ's name, amen.
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 I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Are there any additions to the?
There would be none.
One move we approve, the agenda is written.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing done. All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Recognition of visitors. Come, come, come. Tell us, tell us, tell us.
Hey, Madam Mayor, City Commissioners, it is my honor and pleasure to introduce you to Spencer Stoker.
Aye.
He's been a wastewater operator with us since July 7th of 2020. And on October 19th, he's already successfully obtained his Class 3 wastewater treatment facility operator certification.
Yay!
He has some work.
Good job.
He's been with us first year. He completed both books, Sacramento Correspondence Course from the University of Sacramento. He obtained his Class 2 in September of 2020. He's just only been with us over a year. And he's also attended KWA, KLEA conferences and participated in numerous other programs. And he's actually highly involved with wastewater treatment plant rehabilitation, and he's in the process of abstracting.
You get what, class?
Class 4.
Is that the highest you can go?
Yep, and that's wastewater plants rated Class 4.
Wow. Wow.
Awesome.
His achievement for March next year is metal being addressed. So anyway, appreciate you, Spencer.
Yay!
That's quite an honor, I'll tell you.
That's huge. I want to give a shout out to all the city workers who did such an outstanding job during Arca Lala. It was amazing. Everything was kept in good order, and everyone that I've talked to had an amazing time. So we thank all the sanitation workers, all the street workers who were up early in the morning and getting everything cleaned up on a daily basis. Thank you to the police department who worked tirelessly through thousands of people being in town. So I think everybody had a great Arca Lala.
Well, I want to thank the police department on the counterfeit people that was passing the counterfeit 100s. I think we got one at our Optimus group, and then I think the Boy Scout got the other one, and I think it might have been a third one, but I'm not sure. But anyway, the detective came by and talked to us, talked to the girls, and described who it was and stuff, and it was just hours later they knew who it was, and I think they caught that guy the next day, but they caught three of the guys that night down there. So that's amazing how fast that thing worked, and I mean, that's just unbelievable. We've got some good people in the police department, I'll tell you. Sharp people.
Good. All right. Okay. Welcome back, Commissioner Jennings. We missed you. Okay, so we have any comments from the audience? I thought there for a moment Chief was going to rush up and do that, but he didn't. Okay. Consent agenda, to approve the October 18th minutes as written.
Am I really approve the consent agenda?
It took you seconds since I wasn't here.
I'll second.
So we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? Hearing done. All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. New business.
And what? Consider for approval, accepting title to the Gulf Industrial Park detention pond.
So there is a detention pond at Gulf Industrial Park. It's 5.1 acres. It's just right off of Skyline Road there, and it handles all the stormwater detention that comes off the industrial park. With ACI doing the transition from their profit mode to a nonprofit, they're making some changes, and one of the things, I guess, that's been talked about for years is deeding that property over to the city since it is a wastewater structure, not wastewater, stormwater, excuse me, structure that we maintain. So it'd be just taking ownership of that parcel of land. They're also doing some easement work in there. There's some stormwater and other utility easements within that property that they'll be working on as well, but this one right here is one in one to get your guys' blessing on before we took ownership of it, so.
Commissioner, does anyone have questions?
Well, not being there, you know, there in the city limits right there and stuff, I make a motion that we consider the approval of accepting the title to the Gulf Industrial Park detention pond.
What will that mean for us?
Nothing. We already maintain it.
Yeah, they already moved and everything. It's just declaring up the title work on it.
Do you have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion, Commissioner? Hearing done. All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Leslie?
Approval request from Shelley Robertson, One Margarita Express LLC to waive the age restriction at the Agribusiness Building during the Cali Market event on November 19th, 2022. I'm not sure what information you'd like, but she's requesting to just waive the age restriction. She had one event that she was supposed to go to, and it was going to kind of be a test, but she had a scheduling conflict, so she wasn't able to make it. So she's asking for that exemption again.
It's just not.
And this is?
Go ahead.
This is with the documentation we have here, that's the flagged, the yellowed, item six.
Yes. That's all we're asking to do. Everything else will still be the same.
And?
But they're gonna, in other words, they're gonna be an area where they'll have it flagged off, and the only people, it'll be 21, can get in that certain area, right?
It will be fenced in, and it'll almost be like a little mini beer garden. So it's up to the commission whether you guys want them to drink the alcohol in there and not in the Agribusiness Building, because the Agribusiness Building is already exempt and can't have alcohol in the entire building.
But it needs to be in a certain area where?
It's up to the?
Right. And at the previous location that the market was at, it was privately owned in another town, and they were able to walk around, this is a craft show or an event show, and they were able to walk around to booths while drinking.
But the entire Agribusiness Building right now, you can do that. There, we have it in municipal code where you're allowed alcohol at the Agribusiness Building.
With a permit, or?
Yes.
Okay.
With a permit, but the only difference is the rules say that you can't have anybody under 21 in the building. So we're just asking, she's just asking for that exemption on just the 21 in the building during the event.
As long as it's in an area where it's fenced out.
That's what you choose to have or do, yeah. I'm sure she won't have any issue with that.
No.
But I just?
So function? Go ahead.
I just feel the Sultan's, if we allow this group to do it, then what's going to stop the car show from coming in and saying, "We want to do it because you let them do it"? I think it's a domino effect if we?
Previous commission has allowed it before. We had an MMA fight there, and they weren't allowed to have alcohol in a fenced off area inside the Agribusiness Building.
So functionally, what we're doing is saying that this, if we don't support this request, we're making this an adult-only event.
It would have to be that, or she just would not attend? She would just not be a vendor at the event?
Okay.
One or the other.
So, all right, and?
And I can't see people staying in that area, having watched it before and knowing that they move around and circulate. I can't see them wanting to stay in an area.
And this has kind of been an intergenerational event over the years?
Yeah, it's a family.
Family type.
Craft show, just like.
And what we want to do, so the request, if I understand correctly, is you want to make, you want to maintain that intergenerational thing, you just want to lift the restriction that says that the little ones shouldn't be in the same environment as the adults who are consuming potentially intoxicating beverages. You don't want the? They're saying we don't want to exclude the children from that element of?
Is that what, is that the way you have a understanding?
Some way. You're close. It's, so the rules of the regulations for the Agribusiness Building to have alcohol is no one under 21 can be in the building, in the entire building. So they're just asking to waive that exemption claim back so people under 21 can come in the building. That's all she does. So partly yes, but not constrict it just to that drinking area. Like, children can come in the building, they just won't go into the fenced area. That's the same thing.
Ted? Chief?
Would you guys want to ask?
Sure.
Unless you may know, but do we know that they're going to create that fenced area?
Yes. She is, she, that's what she was going to do last time, but she couldn't do the, she couldn't make the event though. So she'll have a little snow fence inside the building. Because that's what we made the MMA fighter people do.
I think where I would want to be cautious is if we waive the restriction for under 21, what's to keep them from going outside of the fenced area and?
That's correct.
Around the building with alcohol.
Or the children migrating in. I said, or the children from migrating in, you know, I guess mine is the notion of an underaged, just tagging along behind someone who is of appropriate age. And we do know that adolescents are incredibly curious about things that you say don't do, or places that you say don't go. So with?
What are the repercussions if they are in violation of?
I don't, I don't know about what the repercussions are. Do you? Either of you know what the repercussions would be?
Well, I would just try to address that. If, if, if what?
If they came outside the fenced area or, and roamed around the building.
It seems like to me you'd have to have somebody monitor that.
Yeah. To me, it's a craft show. It's a, it's a opportunity to come and look at wares and buy what you like, and I just, when it was privately held in another town, and the individual owned, then they could set their own rules, but this is a city building, and I just don't know that we need?
What's time on that?
Alcohol at a craft show at 10 o'clock in the morning.
Um?
10 to 4 usually.
I'd have to look at the application. I'm sorry, I didn't.
Say it again. What was your question?
10:00 AM to 4:00. He was asking what time?
For the?
For the craft show.
Yeah.
So, but just so you are aware, we do like alcohol in the Agribusiness Building, the entire building.
Permits will be?
My permit, right.
No more than three consecutive days only for?
This is actually?
Six hour period each day between the?
Oh, I see.
It doesn't say.
During that time, it says they get to pick six hours between 10:00 AM and midnight. There's a, so they don't have that whole, that's like 14 hours, but you're saying?
These rules and regulations come right from the application permit, so everything there is what they would have to follow. And she already has a caterer's license through the state, so she does this for a living. I'm just saying, I'm just letting you know.
Well, I'm, I mean, I'm not sure even how to put this in, you know, do they know how to put this in motion?
Well, if we don't have a motion, doesn't it just die?
Yes, according to Larry, yes, it does.
We'll find out. I make a motion to approve the request for Shelley Robertson, One Margarita Express LLC to waive the age restriction at the Agribusiness Building during the Cali Market event on November 19th, 2022.
We have a motion? And no second. Motion dies for lack of a second. So now what does that do?
She won't come to the event.
All right, let's see. Are you okay? Are you wanting to address the commission? Yes, are you? Okay. We're at the?
City manager.
Reports, please. Yes?
Madam Mayor, in light of the gentleman's obvious distress, I might propose that we defer briefly the city manager's presentation and allow, unless this thing being an at-length presentation, seems like he might want to express himself, and then can we modify and allow him to speak?
Um, okay. Come on up. Identify yourself and?
I'm Robert Nicholas, 822 South First. I come to request the commission. Last month, I went to, what was it, the doctor, they got an MRI scheduled for me for this month, and anyway, I've not been able to do much on my house this last month due to this injury, but believe it or not, it is getting better. I'm not having to walk with a cane right now, which is a good thing, you know, or the crux. I did have somebody, actually my cousin, to come help, and he was making some progress there, and then, you know, he got kind of shook. He got shook when you approached him and went to run him off and from helping, and so that kind of backslided me a little bit, and I've just, I've come to request, if I could please get just 30 days to make these improvements, and?
Diane Heson, something?
How much time has he got left on that extension we gave him?
Yes, it's over.
Over?
It was over two months ago.
How long ago?
Over a week ago. In fact, a week ago.
And what has he done right now at this point?
On the south side of the?
Got it leveled out, on the southeast corner, got that leveled out.
You'll have to ask.
If you look at the picture, that's the south side of the garage where I've got the two black marks at the 16 feet in there. He has replaced all the two by fours in there, which were termite ridden and watered, and up until yesterday, there was one sheet of OSB on there. Now it's covered with OSB on there on that part, but that's the only progress that I've seen.
Well, it's just, and now OSB's just temporarily up there, so I can answer you.
See, you're supposed to come up and sign the permits. You haven't done that yet.
I answered my question. Okay, are there any permits on the house? Mike, have there been any permits pulled on the house?
No, none. We did do a normal permit, because that's 180 days. You guys ran him a 30-day permit, so?
Can you tell me what day we were here last that we gave him the extension?
20. It was on, yeah, 9/20.
9/20, okay.
But the 30 days started after the publication, which was the following Saturday night.
Okay, so this is dated 9/21. So the day after the city commission meeting, was that the day we had the city commission meeting? 9/20? This is dated 9/21.
Okay, that's the next day.
So the day after the commission meeting?
They scheduled me for the 28th of this month, which I've seen the doctor, the specialist, and?
To help you out, you're saying?
We're in November. You're meaning the 28th of October?
Yes.
Okay, so not the 28th of this month, the 28th of October?
I went and seen the doctor on the 28th.
What are you going to say? Well, if you take the 30 days on top of the time when it was in the paper, I'd have to give my letter out. It's upstairs. I'd get it if you need to, but I think it's around the 24th. It was a week ago, a week ago from today. It was all.
Okay. But it says here, please give an additional two days.
Well, because that was on the 26th, that I went up there to get the letter, and I said, asked him, could you please, you know, because they know there's no way I can, could you please pre-postdate it from when I came in last, and he ended up like that, and asked for the two, asked for the additional two days for when I see the doctor on the 28th.
That's, that is the 27th? September.
No, no, no.
October 27th.
Yes.
And then it says, please allow for an additional two days to determine.
Yeah, that would, so I can see the doctor in a few days, is what he's talking about.
I'm confused.
I was going to be confusing. I didn't get the paper on 9/20 or 21 at the time. I got that paper on 9/26, 9/26, and that's why, my appointment was on the 28th. Was it 28th or 27th? It was the 28th. So then it would have been the 26th that I went up there. That's why he was asking for the additional two days for when I see the specialist, and we would know what's going on after that, you know. That's what they were talking about, the additional two days.
So what, what, what's the end game? What are you trying to get to?
I have a request from the commissioner, from the commissioners, for 30 days to, from now to be able to bring my cousin and continue on with the south wall and give him the structure.
My question to you is, you hadn't even pulled a permit yet, so how?
He told me I didn't have to. This meeting is the permit.
No, my exact wording too, Robert, was that there was no?
You signed that paper, yeah.
No paper. There was no permit pulled. Didn't need one, that the paper would act as a permit, because I showed it to Hillary, and he approved it, where it was written, and that permit, I mean, the paper actually states that this will serve as a permit for the 30 days. And that was on Friday when I told him that he needed to come up and sign it, and I said, "Come in Monday morning," and signed it.
Give him two days.
I did. I came twice last week, and you guys cut out early on me on Friday.
That Friday was actually the Friday before the dead end. He still had 10 days, and the Thursday's left. It wasn't the Friday of Arca Lala.
No, no, I came up, I was trying to hold you up here, you know.
Madam Mayor, what's the?
Can we?
Can we move ahead to what's the? Staff has invested their time in this process.
What's the disposition of?
Can we get the disposition, excuse me, of staff at this point?
Can you repeat it? I'm sorry.
Where are we at? And then he wants a quick synopsis of how we got here and where we're at now.
And what's your recommendations?
In 2016, I think it was, we actually started the process of it. It was junk and debris. Sent layers out to that, and then in 2019, it became a dangerous structure, and I have talked to Robert numerous times, and he was going to get it fixed, and nothing's ever happened.
I got the debris.
The debris got picked up.
Okay, so I mean, yeah, that was rectified, and so?
So far as electrical and the other stuff, nothing?
We talked about that on the, after I get the 30, then I get the, then I can get the 90-day extension and handle that part.
The 30-day extension was for the OSB, house wrap, siding, and footing, and a foundation.
I got the, I got the house wrap. I got the, I got the OSB.
Did you get the house wrap?
No.
I didn't get it wrapped, but I do have the house wrap, and I did get the OSB. I got all that, the materials to do it with, and I got the?
These materials out there?
Yes, sir. The materials are there.
Have you seen them?
No, I have not.
Yeah, I could take you there and not.
No, it's in the backyard today, and I did also.
Yeah, it is. Yeah, so.
And your brother-in-law's going to, how's he on this?
Cousin.
Where's he living at?
Kansas? Yeah. About 35 minutes from here.
This is a five-year-old project, according to Mr. Bellis. He's been working with this.
He said since 2019, actually three.
The structure was actually about three years. It was junk and debris from 2016.
But that was rectified. I totally took that.
And where would we be in 30 days?
Have the, that's outside, south side inspected as I go and covered in house wrap and? Have the, that's outside, south side inspected as I go, and covered in house wrap and siding on.
Is that confined?
The agreement was the house have, OSB was rotted at, house wrap on the house, but just the south side, and siding on the house, plus a footing underneath where there's no footing there with the massive victims at, and a stem wall up there, I mean, a foundation to support that. And then after he gets that done, then we can go with the 90-day and let him do the electrical.
Well, you say the, you say the material's on location.
Yes, sir.
Well, I would recommend you go out and inspect it, make sure if that material's on location, I'd probably give him, I'm just telling myself, maybe an extra 30 days to see what happens. But if the material's not there, you know, then I don't see us going 30 days. I mean...
Where's it at, out there, Bob?
In the backyard.
In the backyard, okay. What did you get it?
When did I get it? Let's see, right, when I seen you last over there, I got the rest of it like two days after that.
I mean, that, that, that address is something, you should, a receipt that says, here's what I bought, purchased, acquired, is it real?
You have a document that says I purchased it?
I picked it, what I got, I traded with, with Mr. Knuckles and...
Okay, and then we're moving into marginally seasonable weather. Can the work continue as the temperature?
Yeah, I heard 30 days to get us to 90 days to wrap.
And I, I would just... What I hear is, I hear you.
Every, something in you that wants to get it done.
Yes, sir.
What, what I also hear is that there's a lot more want-to history than there is done. And, and...
That, that's the part that I, I think, that's the part that I think is the...
It's where we have the gap, is we just kind of...
You know? It just needs, it just needs...
Sounds like it just, it needs to get done, and it hasn't gotten done.
Well, my feeling is, if he's got the material on location, like he says, and have our inspector go out and make sure it's on location, then we'll give him another 30 days and see what...
Diane.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mike, did you say you were out there and you didn't see it?
I was out there about 10:30 this morning. I did not see it, because I really didn't look that hard. It could have been somewhere where I wasn't looking at. But I was looking for anything that he had completed down there, like the foundation or anything like that.
Absolutely nothing has been completed at all.
No, he's got the south wall up to 16 feet on that garage done, but he's still got probably another 10 or 12 feet left to do on it. And then he's got to do the house wrap and replace any other OSB that's rotted and bad, and then put the siding on.
The southeast corner where the roof was, was dropping, that's been brought up and it's level, it's all open and out now, so that has been completed, I guess.
So this is the 30 days that you've just completed, the 30 days that we gave you?
Well, we can go with that.
After... Yes, I see you waving your arms. Do you want to speak? Come forward. State your name. When you get here.
My name is Patricia Harden. I am the president of the American Postal Workers Union, the worksite here, and also of this city. Also his girlfriend. I was wondering if, since he has a sciatic crockbone, he can't barely move, that with, and he's getting an MRI, taking it to the doctor. And it's hard for him to work, and it's hard for his cousin to do it all by himself. Is there any possible way that my family can also help him to do it?
I'm not sure.
Not sure, because he was told, he was told that he was, he had to do it by himself. He can't barely stand up. He's got, he's got a herniated disc that he's had.
Mike?
But, well, I told Bob on that Friday, in the letter, it says that he's supposed to do it by himself, but I told him I would come to the conclusion that he would have family help him. Which is the cousin, the brother, brother-in-law, anything like that.
She's asking you if her and her family can help.
Oh. That'd be his family.
His significant other.
Does your family have any building experience?
Absolutely.
What kind do they have?
Well, my, my father has been a carpenter all of his life, which has taught my brothers. My brother-in-law is also a Pentecostal preacher. So my whole family, all my nephews, my nieces and nephews, always have that embedded in us as we have grown up. Done all of it.
Miss up the commission, if they want to give the 30 days after I inspected the materials there, that's what Jay came up, I'll make say both of that. I'd much rather see a structure stay in place and fixed up and kept on the tax roll, by all means. So I, to me, I would say, since they're not family, I would allow it. That's me talking.
Would be beneficial. Because he cannot get well if he's up there trying to climb up ladder.
Well, he will be able to do it.
No, he's not, absolutely.
I mean, that's probably, that's probably the most, the most practical thing I've heard, is that I don't see anybody standing there that's able to do what needs to be done.
Obviously, there, it, it, it needs a different set of hands or group of hands. That part makes sense.
So Mike, you're...
You're not going to get it done. Five days, or 10 days, or 30 days, or 90, you're not in a condition to get it done, so, so then...
So we're not really talking about what you can or can't do. We're talking about the structure itself and whether or not, one, it can be salvaged, it sounds like. Structurally, you're saying, it's your opinion, that it could be salvaged? Or could be brought to, could be brought to code?
Yeah, it could be brought to code. Like I tell everybody, if somebody has a dollar house and they want to put $5 in it to bring it up the code, power to you is back on the tax roll.
Could be brought, so it could be brought to code.
We, we, we've struck, and I appreciate your compassion, Commissioner Warren.
But it just hits the bad penny. You know, it just hasn't gone away. So we need to say, what makes it, what gets us to the endpoint, the endpoint? A habitable structure that's on the tax rolls. Is there a credible plan of action for that?
If there is, and somebody wants to spend $5 for the dollar, then we don't want to stand in the way of that. It might not be the best...
So how soon, could your family start?
Immediately. I think Bob's got to sign that paper, and I've got to redo it now since it's out of date. He's got to sign that for the permit. And once you show adequate, you know, all that stuff down, then we can give the 90-day, if they go with it.
Mike?
Yes, sir. I mean, ma'am, sorry.
Would it, would it be feasible to give them 10 days to make sure we're getting something done?
Instead of giving them a total of 30 days, and we're 30 more days down the line, and it's not where we're supposed to be?
Absolutely, you could. You know, if they show progress of what should be done in those 10 days, they do that.
Then we could extend it.
Then we could extend it another 20.
Well, our next meeting's in two weeks. Our next meeting, between now and our next meeting.
Ten business days?
Fifteenth is our next meeting.
Okay, so 10 business days. And, and, but, but then, see, there's some interim things also. I think that that's, those are the guards, okay? At my disposition, is the, if I'm coming on Wednesday to sign something or to complete some action, we need that to happen on Wednesday, and not on, on the ninth day.
Right.
You know, to defer. So if we hit, let's just sit rigid, what do you need done?
When do you need it done to say that we're going to honor timelines and move forward?
Because, you know, then, I mean, because we're massaging to 10, but 10 has a history of becoming three years.
It would be further along if he wasn't broken.
We understand that, but, but we are at the, what can we say needs to be done tomorrow that can be done tomorrow? And what can we say needs to be done by Friday that needs to be, that can be, that will be done by Friday, and then what can we? Then that moves us to where we are in 10 days. We won't come back here and say, this didn't happen, and this didn't happen, and this didn't happen. We just need to have...
Well, firstly, you got to sign the papers, right?
Yeah, I'll have to do that later.
The papers would have to be signed tomorrow. Okay, at some point, whatever, they have to be signed tomorrow. Mike is going to go out, one of the commissioners wanted you to inspect the materials to make sure they're there.
Yes, ma'am.
Time, love that.
Right, and so we get past that hurdle. But what I don't want is to continue to do this with the same results at the end. I don't know how long you've physically been in this condition. Two months you've been like this? Okay.
So the material's on hand tomorrow, right?
When he came in 30 days ago, he was not in this condition.
Yes, I was. Yes, I was.
Okay.
Anthony Ryder was sitting next to me. I remember Anthony Ryder, I was almost in tears over there because of so much pain.
What do you think that can get done?
Our next commission meeting?
Our next commission meeting.
I would say any and all the OSB that's rotted should be able to be replaced. And that can be done pretty easily within probably three days. House wrap needs to be on there, that's a day job.
And the rubbish needs to be hauled off.
And the rubbish needs to be hauled off, you know?
I've got all the rubbish here I need to haul off now from...
I would say if you have the OSB taken care of and inspected, the house wrap on there, and say at least the south side siding. That is, that is very agreeable in two weeks.
Okay, okay.
So the material, okay, I'm trying to get a set, the materials to get the work done need to have...
Need to be on site. We've been told on site.
Okay, let's authenticate that.
And let's put an end to it. If it's not done, we're done, no more. Don't come back and talk to us anymore.
And then we have, we have steps, then. We have steps.
If there's no material on the job, then I report to you guys and let you know that it's over with.
If there's no materials out there, you go straight to the city manager. We won't meet for another two weeks. If there's any hiccups, report straight to the city manager. Okay, the paper gets signed tomorrow. You inspect the...
There we go.
And you're saying that that material is there?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so he's going to inspect that, and if it's there, okay, we move forward to the next.
He's going to sign up tomorrow. And we get a signature tomorrow on something?
Signature tomorrow on the paperwork.
I'll be there by 8:30 to look at that, and once I see that, then I'll go ahead and get the letter typed up ready to go.
Wait for your office hours, six?
Sorry.
What are your office hours?
Eight to five.
Eight to five.
So I'm just saying, so that we don't have, he wasn't there, well, we tried to come by, he wasn't there, off your offices.
You physically have to be there in order for him to sign them? Can someone on staff take his signature?
I want to be there.
Okay, you want to be there.
Just in case there's any kind of questions, I want to...
But I mean, I don't want you to be in the potty and he comes through and say, I was there, but you were.
Well, they just talked about, he's going to go look at the materials at 8:30.
I'll make sure, I'll make sure I'm there at any point.
Okay, okay.
I saw bother there, I'll make sure.
Yeah, just, we just, okay, you just want to hit the target, is what we want to do.
Sounds like we got a plan.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yeah, thank you.
You very much.
And thank you.
I hope you get to, I hope you get to feeling better.
Happy to.
Here's all your stuff here.
I hope you get to feeling better.
I have a double herniated disc in my lower back, and it's, it took me seven and a half weeks of physical therapy. It's a joke.
I think the train, that train crash finally caught up to me, is what it is.
That's, that's good work. Ultimately, if there's a...
Salvable property that we can retain.
We've done good work.
But we just want to make sure that, that's what we're putting our work into.
Very welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Warren. Thank you, Commissioner Spielman. Thank you, Mayor Gignor.
Good work.
City manager report.
So I just want to remind you guys, it's particularly tight now, but the legislative luncheon at, on Thursday at noon in Wichita. Anybody, you know, I know, Eric Gignor and I will attend. There is a childcare for business luncheon sponsored by the Workforce Development Center. Going to be at the Wright Room from noon to one on Thursday, the third.
Commissioner Warren will attend on his birthday.
And there's a flyer on your, on your tables there, if you'd like to attend that. Sunday, November 13th, from 10 to noon. Chamber's having a biannual meeting out at the Ark City Golf and Fitness, so depending if you'd want to attend that.
It's Sunday at 9?
It's Sunday, the 13th, from 10 a.m. to noon.
That's jerk.
I know, it's a weird time, and... Anyway, it's, it's there if you, maybe worship on the golf course, I don't know.
Yeah. It's all healing.
And then, and then also, you guys have an invitation for a local elected, local elected official reception at the Wichita Chamber. So all the locally elected officials from around this part of the state, along with state representatives and business leaders, are invited to this. It's downtown Wichita, it's at the Garden Hilton, I believe, so if you're interested, let me know, I have reservations there for it. It's usually a pretty good, pretty good event with a lot of, a lot of your peers from around other cities in the area and the state elected officials as well. The joint venture, so out at the wastewater treatment plant, they're going to come in on January 17th meeting and give you guys an update on the project, where things are at, what's going on there, and also on the budget, the budget piece of it. So far, things are running, running a little under what was projected, so that's good, and hopefully it's that way. Anything else on that? Rod, you want to?
How much, how much?
He didn't give me a number, he just said that they are running a little...
Timeline, we're still on timeline.
Timeline, we're still looking March-ish to finish up, yeah. So things are still looking good there, so. And then we did have Ricky Hayes and Robin O'Grady with Colber Property were in town on Friday. And so they got to visit some sites, and we had lunch with them, and so Devin Baker, he's with Commonwealth Companies, he's supposed to be in, in town to visit sometime this month as well, to look at sites as well. So we'll kind of keep you updated on that, but they're, they are, they're very interested in doing some type of multifamily housing here, so just kind of work out the details and get all that moving forward, so.
Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. Commission? Anything you wanted to say or talk about?
I might motion adjourn.
Second.
Somebody's, somebody's got to say.
No, we haven't voted yet. We haven't voted.
Somebody's got to make the motion.
We've moved in second, and we adjourned. Any further discussion regarding that?
Actually, snap back down.
All in favor, say aye. All, both same side. Motion carries.
Good. And thank you for guiding through.